Ray, how you doing?
All right, welcome everyone. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight for work session for Monday, October 24th. And I guess the first issue, the first item on the agenda here is transportation projects. And Ellen, you've got the presentation on this tonight, and I guess this is a ranking discussion for City Hall.
Do you ask if, just asked if staff could give us their ranking of transportation projects through the comprehensive plan? So what we did is we had kind of a pre-hold process.
All right, hold on one second.
Push the buttons on the bottom for that way. It's on the bottom, turn it upside down, push it all down. One second. Again.
Battery.
Yeah.
You want mine? Or is that speaker? Okay. Once again, council asked staff to provide a ranking of transportation projects that were proposed in the comprehensive plan. What we did is basically three things. We looked at existing comprehensive, or plans that were currently in the comprehensive plan. We talked about projects we might want to add to the list of plans of future projects. And we also just talked about general concerns. What we had is we had an informal meeting with representatives of public works, fire, police, planning, engineering, and also we had Steve Pappas from the school division with us also, so we would get the schools input also. What you have in your package is some information on how we ranked the projects, what factors we can consider, and also a little bit on how we scored it. Basically, what we did is everybody had a, an opportunity to rank each project, or to score each project, from one to five. Five being they thought the project would do the most, provide the most improvement for each particular factor. One meaning they didn't think it would do much good for that particular concern. And then you also have a summary which shows the projects in the order for the, or based on what got the highest score and what got the lowest. So on the summary sheet, a project that got a one score, got the highest score for that, for either safety or overall, and a, the project that, projects that got the six and the seven scored lowest. So, top scoring projects. Leyden Way, Little Florida and Picocson Avenue intersection received the highest number of points and was tied number first for safety concerns. Little Florida Road improvements came in second, and came in second also for safety concerns. City Hall Extended ranked high, and what that is, is that's a new project. And while it didn't, wasn't as high in terms of safety, what that ranked high in was in terms of connectivity, getting around the city using alternate routes and also maybe promoting economic development. Yorktown Road improvements were safety, and Victory Boulevard was a combination of safety, city aesthetics, promoting business. And what I've done is I've given you basic, basically aerial views of some of the projects. This is the Leyden Way, Little Florida Road, Picocson Avenue intersection. And let me stop for just a minute and say, the staff rankings are subjective. We didn't have, this is just based on staff members' experience in the field and what they see every day when they're driving through the city. The issues with this intersection include low visibility. You'll see the roads aren't meeting at right corners. It's a little bit more confusing. There are blind corners leading up to this intersection, and there's a lot of commuter traffic that goes through.
Yeah, I know.
Little Florida Road is a very narrow road compared to some of the newer roads. If you look here, this is Little Florida, and this is some of the newer roads, and you can just see they're wider. In addition, parts of Little Florida Road are lined with some fairly deep ditches, no shoulder, so that's an issue. Victory Boulevard near With Creek Road. You have a lot of commercial property entrances here. You have people trying to go from a parking lot on one side of the road across to the other side. You have lanes that are changing, or roads that are widening. Just basically, a lot going, a lot on, a lot of turns, and that leads to a great, a lot of intersect, a lot of accidents in the city. There's another view of it. Basically, you can see how the road along, how Victory Boulevard widens that. City Hall Extended was an idea that was kind of, that's been floated a couple times, and basically what this is, is this would be a road that extended, that extends City Hall Avenue north of Victory Boulevard, and that would be combined with a road that connects With Creek Road to Yorktown Road. So basically, you would come up with some sort of T-road intersection through this undeveloped land, and basically you would provide connectivity from With Creek Road to Yorktown Road without getting on Victory Boulevard. And you would allow people, if this were ever to be developed into a commercial district, you would attach, you would connect this commercial district with the existing one on With Creek Road. This project may be kind of a moot point. This is the With Creek Road-Carris Chapel intersection. Basically, before the idea of widening With Creek Road in this part of, in the, on its southern end came about, there was talk of putting some sort of signal or some sort of additional traffic control here near the city border with Hampton where Carris Chapel comes in. You get a lot of commuter traffic bypassing the city and coming and making left-hand turns on, at this intersection. Okay, speaking of With Creek Road widening, there's a VDOT project going on, currently underway to widen With Creek Road from where it narrows down to two lanes through the Hampton, across the Hampton border and through the intersection near NASA, or past the intersection at NASA. And the idea here would be to do a couple things. One is to raise, elevate the causeway, so we have another way out of the city during storms. Right now, it's so low that it floods out during periodic high tides and during storm events. And also to help with commuter traffic to and from Hampton. And this is another view. You can see where we currently have the wider road and where it annex down to two lanes. After we talked about these projects, we also, and added a couple new ones, we also just had a general discussion about safety issues or concerns that various staff members have. And, excuse me, here's Yorktown Road. Yorktown Road is the same situation as Little Florida Road, in that it's an older road, it's fairly narrow, especially, you can see here, once again, you've got residential roads that are newer, that are wider than Yorktown Road. This project also, I think, included some sidewalks and just to make it easier for pedestrians. Okay, this is one of the projects that was brought up at the meeting. We have a crosswalk located on a curve, which means you have limited visibility. This particular one's near the middle school, and staff is hoping someday that we can relocate this crosswalk, so that there's more visibility, or perhaps provide some sort of control here, because this is a commuter route. Finally, the school board has cited this intersection as a problem. This is Odd Road and Little Florida. You have school buses turning onto, onto and off of Odd Road at the beginning and the end of the school day, and you also have a lot of commuter traffic. The intersection doesn't quite line up at right angles, and the school buses sometimes have difficulty getting onto this intersection. So this is something we should probably look at in the future. So, any questions at this point, or what can we?
Did the school board not mention a problem at Park Street or Forest?
They did say, it's the same type situation where they have commuter traffic while buses are turning.
Okay.
Any questions, council?
The road that would go through the vacant property, they have Victory.
Yes.
Has, has it been looked at to the point that you would know where that road would go through?
No. And I did, I purposely did not put, did not put a road on there because we haven't looked at. We obviously would have to acquire right-of-way. That's all privately owned at this point.
Not enough you had an idea and could, how many property owners you talked about, because it could be a lot.
Right, and it may be something you do staged, maybe you connect, you know, you connect City Hall Avenue to either With Creek Road or Yorktown Road. It may not be as straight a T-intersection just to take into account whatever the on-the-ground conditions are and how many people you're impacting there. But the other thing that would do is also open up some of these properties for redevelopment to, or for development also.
Do we know how much of that is wetlands? That's what I was thinking.
That's what I was thinking, is that a lot of that is wetlands.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have a transportation, it's more of a comment than a question, it's not a transportation project, but just minor here, is we have traffic lights at relatively low volume intersections with left-turn arrows, and you have to sit there, Yorktown Road and Huntsnet is my favorite example, where I have to sit there 11 o'clock at night, no traffic anywhere in sight forever, to wait till the state decides it's okay for me to turn and they flash that green arrow. And that just agitates me. Can we just flash those yellow, or the left-turn lights at some hour, like seven or eight, or something like that?
I don't know.
Wasn't there a guy from Hampton, Judy Hughes, to come out and fix our lights?
Yeah.
We still do?
Actually-
It's just a computer setting.
Actually, Kevin's been working probably with that gentleman on, Kevin represents us at HRTPO, which is the Hampton Roads Regional Transportation Organization, if I got, if I have all my initials in order. And he took over this job about two or three months ago, and he's been working on a couple projects, so I'll let you talk about it.
We have applied for CMAC funding, which is congestion mitigation and air quality funding from HRTPO. They have about $10 million available, and they do this years in advance, so we've applied for funding in 2018, so it's a little ways off. But one of the projects that we have applied for funding for is a citywide signalization upgrade. So it would take our, I believe we have four signalized intersections, and we would upgrade them and make it easier for Hampton to maintain them, especially remotely. They wouldn't have to come out anymore. When there's, when there's a timing issue or they go out, they would be able to remotely handle that. So that project ranked fairly highly. I believe it was 12th among about 38 projects submitted for that fiscal year. We will be meeting again in November, November 9th, I believe, to actually appropriate funding for that year. So we'll be fighting for about $250,000 of that $10 million.
That's nice long-term, but I'd still like to dig those left-turn arrows.
I think, I think city manager took your note, and I'm sure that he'll look into it.
I guess the, this is for the chief more than you, Ellen. Carris Chapel and With Creek Road, you see in the morning, 7:30 in the morning, the cars on Carris Chapel are back up 15, 16, 17 deep. I think the question was asked maybe years ago. No right-hand turn between the hours of 6 and 8, 6 and 9. Is that feasible to get them to come down Victory Boulevard and making the turn down the McDonald's onto With Creek Road to ease the, the traffic out of, out of town?
That might require a traffic engineer to look at that closely, but if you look at the volume of the traffic from With Creek Road, if you're down at the intersection of Little Florida, and then add all that traffic back around, that might be problematic. I don't know how much of that backup is attributed to the fact that we have some very cordial citizens who wait and alternate, alternate, and alternate.
Yeah.
Or, but that could, that could be problematic if, if all of that traffic funneled around down Little, Little Florida, or down Victory Boulevard onto With Creek Road and fell in line there, especially in the mornings where it rains. You notice when it's rainy weather, that backs up a lot farther than it normally does under when it's dry conditions. So I think that would be, but a traffic engineer might better weigh in on that than I would in terms of what volume of traffic that would create.
Well, also, if you had no right-hand turn there, folks who lived up in that area might be inclined to use Bethel Road and come down 171 and into Langley or NASA that way.
Well, it would certainly force them to do that if they were going to obey the sign, yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So, but, but again, you know, that's, that would put a volume of traffic, you know, coming back into the city when most of the folks coming, or from the city are actually trying to leave that route in the morning, so I just don't know what that would do congestion-wise. But it is a challenge for us in the morning, especially when there's, when there's rainy weather. You're absolutely correct.
Yeah. It's pretty tough to complain about people being very, very well-mannered, but that's actually what backs it up?
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And the thing is, I think that the widening project actually may fix some of that. You know, one of the concerns I always have for safety is the fact that at the entrance to the villas, we have that right lane dead ends there. And the residents of the villas are very concerned about that because they'll be sitting at that stop sign waiting to get out, and they see people accelerating in that right lane to get up and get it, to pull over to the left. And it concerns them, and I've met with them about that on more than one occasion. But, but it also creates a bottleneck, which adds to the problem of when people merge there, that creates a traffic bottleneck for us in the mornings, because, you know, folks, folks that are turning from Little Florida onto With Creek are using the left lane, and there'll be folks in the right lane that are on With Creek Road already heading south, and then they have to merge at some point. So I really think that that, that widening project from the villas all the way to the, to the, to the bridge would certainly be helpful. That might take care of the entire problem.
I have another question going back to the grant money you said. It's from HRTPO?
Yes, well, it's from the federal government. They get this lump sum, they overbred.
Did I hear you say it is attached to air quality?
It's CMAC funding. It's congestion mitigation and air quality is what that stands for.
So have we applied for any sidewalks through that?
Sidewalk project, we, we also applied for South Lawson Park Bike Path funding through that. That ranked much lower than the, the signalization upgrade. But you can, I'm, I'm not sure if sidewalks specifically you can apply for. You would be more familiar with that than me.
I think sidewalks and bike paths typically fall under that. Basically, you're looking at anything that gets cars off the road or keeps car, gets cars from, keeps them from standing still for long periods of time, just pumping out emissions, basically, is where the signalization gets in. If you have a more efficient signal, cars are not sitting there as long, so, which kind of goes back to the 11 o'clock at night issue at the other intersection.
I would encourage you to, to look and to see if we can get some money for sidewalks, bike paths, accommodations, walking trail, whatever we need to call it.
There have been sidewalk projects and bike trail projects that have gone through the process in other localities. I don't think as many are getting through periodically. When I was sitting on this committee, it seemed like there would, the federal government would say, these are the projects we are encouraging now. But we can certainly get on the list if we don't get on the list.
Right. So I would highly encourage that, look into getting some.
Did I understand that this is through the EPA and the federal government?
No, this is, the Federal Highway Administration, a few years ago, they were looking at how money was allocated. I guess it was a combination of the political process and the Federal Highway Administration, and instead of having every locality fight each other for funding for transportation projects, they started going through these regional training, these regional planning boards. At first, they tried to start the authorities, which was obviously an issue. Now we're in these, these planning organizations. So basically, instead of fighting with Roanoke for money, we're, we're only fighting with, or we're only competing with Hampton, James City County. And basically, we were, we would have a difficult time getting a very expensive project for us because there would be so many other projects at the same scale in larger cities. But when it comes to smaller projects, if we have a couple in our back pocket, sometimes after the big localities like Virginia Beach and Newport News have finished fighting over that money, there may be just enough for us to sneak in and get it for funding.
Well, I heard the words clean air in there, and I thought I heard EPA, and I wanted to caution to look out for strings attached to any funding.
Strings.
Strings attached to EPA money.
On the, the figures that you had for the Picocson Avenue, Little Florida-Leyden Way intersection, in $2,011, it was 394.
Right, now let me-
That did not include acquiring property, would it?
Correct. And let me tell you exactly what those, those dollar numbers are. Those are what was written in the comprehensive plan adjusted for inflation to $2,011. Be aware that anything that I did there is subject to a new design, a new budget estimate, and probably a lot more, or a lot higher cost. Basically, that was just, you should look at those and see how they compare relative to each other, but don't think about that as a budget amount. You would have to hire a consultant who would have to do a lot more detailed cost estimate, right.
Another study, and then, and then the-
Mm-hmm, right.
Land acquisition would be extra.
Correct.
Whatever, whatever it was for the intersection itself.
Correct. Basically, it seems like the older the agency, the more hoops you have to jump through to get your project done, and I think the Federal Highway Administration is one of our oldest agencies, so there are a lot of studies involved for new projects, any sort of road project.
Okay. So the, I guess I've got one or two questions. One is, you know, and here, and it's a great idea to get traffic signalization dollars. What would it take to have somebody down here qualified to work on the lights, period?
You mean, as in next week?
As in, a year from now?
And they come do it.
Okay, and that is a minimal charge for us?
Yeah.
Okay.
We get a very good deal from them.
Okay. You know, because $250,000 to be able to adjust lights remotely seems like a lot, you know, when, I think we've got more pressing priorities, just food for thought there for staff.
It's, it's more than simply the ability to do that.
Okay, you can explain the details later. Next thing is, what is it that, from council's standpoint, I guess this is staff's recommendation, and you're looking for council's head nod or whatever to agree with these? Is that what the order is for this evening?
I think, and I don't speak, but others can speak for themselves, most of these projects require a fair amount of lead time. As Kevin said, for the CMAC projects, we're now in the queue for 2018 projects. Some of the other funding streams are even much further out. The long, you know, their six-year plan is at least six years out. The 25-year transportation plan is obviously 25 years out. If there are a small handful of projects that the council would like us to invest additional time and potentially some resources in developing so that they'll be ripe for submission, we'd like to know what those are. Sometimes we can do them ourselves. We may well need consultant support on some to advance it further, but there are long lead time projects, so if there's any you'd like us to get in the queue so they're actionable, we'd just like to know what those are.
Okay, so back to council then. Are, are we basically in agreement with staff going down here, or do we have other comments and other priorities as the city council?
Let me ask a question that's not a priority, but are there any easy fixes to some of these situations? For example, and I was mentioning this to another council member, I've personally known of three rather serious accidents on Little Florida Road that simply involved a car veering off just enough to catch a culvert or go in a ditch. Is there any, something as simple as piping some of the worst areas on that road so that there'd be a shoulder that would protect at least some instances where a car might veer off the road just a little bit? One of the, one of the great concerns that I have when I see a bicycle on that road.
Right.
It's just-
Yeah, we're, I think we're all with you on the bike.
Yeah, so.
I worked with Jody Hollingsworth years ago to look at the cost of putting in sidewalks along Little Florida, piping the ditches, putting in sidewalks, and the cost was extremely high then because of right-of-way acquisition. That's a very narrow right-of-way. One of the things we were looking at as part of the Chesapeake Bay TMDL is possibly piping some ditches that are already in the right-of-way, and I'd have to go back and look at the plats to figure out where we are with that, and maybe providing a little bit of land instead of a deep ditch along the side. I would certainly like to see that done. That's a couple years out with the TMDL program, but I think if, what we've talked about with that is looking at something that solves more than one issue. And I think that would, that may very well be a candidate project.
Yeah. If the, if the deepest ditches were, if we actually had the right-of-way there, you wouldn't necessarily have to alleviate the problem, you wouldn't necessarily have to build a sidewalk right-of-way.
Right, no, just-
You fill the ditch, and if you pipe the ditch-
Right.
And cover it up, you've got a flat surface for somebody to walk on or possibly ride a bicycle.
Right, and that's-
Without a sidewalk.
Right, at this point, we're just talking about, what I was just talking about was a dual-purpose TMDL project would just be filling in those really deep ditches maybe.
And the landowner may be willing to give us a little right-of-way not to have that deep ditch.
Exactly.
Right.
Possibly, I don't know that.
All right. Basically, I'm in agreement with staff on overall scores on one and two.
Yeah.
I've not, you know, in the, in the many years that I've sat on council and now as, as mayor, bottom line is, Little, the intersection alignment as being the number one item and hardest thing that we've got to do, and if we're going to invest additional staff time, I would like to do it there. And I think as far as getting on VDOT's dance card, I would accrue, and I would also say that Little Florida Road should have already been there.
Yep.
For this city. Much, I think, more important than anything than Victory Boulevard in the future. But Little Florida has got to be the most dangerous roadway that we've got.
If, if all we did at Leyden Way was square off the intersection, tee it up, we have the right-of-way for that, correct? With what we bought from the, whatever, the old C&amp;P building, the, whatever they call it now. But that, if I remember correctly, when we, when we bought that thing, we said the main reason to do it is because we'll own the property to align that intersection.
I would like to go back and check. I've seen a couple squaring it off configurations, and I'm not totally sure right now. I would have to go back and check.
Because what I'm gonna say is-
State will square, and don't get into circling.
If you, if you, yeah.
I like the circle.
That would be the Buddy Green's.
Well, circles are fine in their place, but you don't want to slow that traffic down commuting to 10 miles an hour every day. I mean, you think you have phone calls now, you'll have a lot of them then. Plus, to, to have enough right-of-way to do-
Oh, yeah.
A roundabout correctly, I think you're going to be buying those two houses on the, I guess it'd be the north side of Picocson Avenue, right there at the end, because they're right on the edge of the road now. And to configure a circle in there, you're going to be buying those two houses. I don't think anybody on this council wants to do that.
If I remember right, it depends on what kind of a roundabout you want, whether it be a two-lane roundabout or a one-lane roundabout. And I think if we went back and looked at the Kubin study from 2004, she had the two options in there, you know, one lane and the two-lane option for roundabouts. But I think the consensus back then was, you know, you'd probably want a two-lane roundabout going, because a one lane would, would slow the speed limit down, like you said, maybe 15 miles an hour, where-
Best of the hour.
Where a two-lane roundabout, you'd have around a 30 mile an hour, you know, going through the, the roundabout or whatever. But, you know, that's seven years ago, so I'm not certain.
I don't want to get into roundabouts and the, and the, all I'm saying is, bottom, bottom line, I knew this decision's coming eventually for the council roundabout or squared-off intersection. I don't know- I don't want to get into roundabouts. And all I'm saying is, bottom line, I knew this decision's coming eventually for the council roundabout or squared-off intersection. I don't know how we've escaped it thus far. We just keep talking about it. But it is the number one item. And I think we can all agree to that, is the number one intersection that needs to be fixed in the city. And if we're all in agreement with that, then we should tell, let staff know that, bring us some, you know, invest some additional time, and let's get this fixed, and let's find the source of money for it. And the next thing is, Little Florida, overall, versus these others, I think we can all argue about the rankings of four, five, six. You know, I like this one better than that one. But number one and number two, are we, are we solid with those?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Yep.
I would just like to reiterate again. I think sidewalks is so important in any of these. So sidewalks is up at the top for me, for both safety and overall. And I know that they are part of the Little Florida Road Improvement part.
And I will say that we did not rank sidewalk projects because you have a Citizens Committee that did a very thorough, a much more objective job of looking at sidewalks. So.
So I'd encourage you to try to get some of those then on the, in that list. Get in mind.
I think we could alleviate a lot of the problems on Little Florida, especially like in the report here talks about, you know, the ditches being so deep down around Cedar and Farr, by doing a little bit at a time and putting in the piping and whatever, and just a little bit of covering to give, give you a little access for, you know, bikes, most bikes, you know. A couple of them aren't going to go in the little walkway area. But I think we could do that piecemeal easier than we could do a whole road.
Oh, yeah. Well, I was thinking more of the approach VDOT and put it on the plan. I don't think it's going to be done in the next four to five years. I'm looking out there for major dollar improvements in the Little Florida Road corridor. And I think it would take a lot of good politicking to make sure that it stayed as small as possible, because we all know what VDOT would like to build, which is five lanes. So five lanes through there is very difficult, and will probably just exasperate the problem. But if we can start the process now, get it, maybe design, custom design the project that we want, and start approaching the state for some help with it, then maybe we can come up with something workable. But, all right. So what I'm hearing is consensus on one and two. The bottom ones, I'm not sure I'd rank them. I'd just keep them as, as options, because I'm sure fundamentals will change based on, on that, and.
If somebody were to buy some property and want to develop it either out here or across the street.
Right. It could definitely change.
That might accelerate.
Right. Okay.
I think that's great. That's the direction we needed. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks a lot, Ellen.
Thank you, Ellen.
All right. The second item on the work session this evening is financial report. Teresa?
Teresa's going to highlight the financial report that was in your package last Thursday. See your cheat sheet notes on the bottom there?
I know it. I have to have my cheat sheet, sorry. Tonight, I just wanted to go over, you know, where we stood at the end of 2011, where we stand through September, and some of the challenges that we're going to face going into the 13 budget. The city ended the year with the unassigned fund balance, general fund balance of about $5 million. That's about $1.6 million over the 15% of the adopted 12 expenditures, which is the financial policy, fund balance policy adopted by council. Through council action, and we have appropriated or assigned $980,000 of that $1.6 million of fund balance. That does include the $302,000 that we've talked about for setting aside for the additional revenue decrease or energy costs associated with the increase in gas prices. And looking through September, looking at about $4.6 million of unassigned fund balance at the end of June 2012. Back in July, we talked about the HVAC system at City Hall and the need for repairs, and that, and the debt service increase for the Public Works Building. The HVAC repairs have been addressed through an appropriation done by council a few months ago, and we are currently preparing the IFB for that, for that project. The public debt service for the Public Works Building, I'll talk about that in a minute when we talk about the 13 challenges. And then we also have identified current budget funding for the position study that has been talked about for the position and FLSA classification study. The one thing, when it comes to revenue, when I was looking over the September, September financial statement, and the, with the land book coming out and talking with Graham, we are expecting about $50,000 less in revenue taxes than we budgeted for fiscal year 12. But the good side of that is our public service corporations, we're expecting $50,000 more. So our net real estate taxes are looking okay. We are very early in the year. So right now, we don't anticipate any revenue shortfalls at this point for the current year. When we talk about fiscal year 13, the budget for fiscal year 13, we're going to have a debt increase of about $395,000. And this does exceed the natural growth for the city. This debt service includes the savings of the recently refinanced debt that we have, and it also includes the additional debt service we'll have with the Public Works Building. At this point, we don't know what our insurance rates or VRS rates will be. With the state's underfunding of VRS, we can assume that those costs will increase. How much, we don't know. We anticipate an increase in health insurance rates as well. That's been the trend over the last few years. We have also been made aware of legislation that may be introduced to reduce funding for the highway maintenance. It just came out in a newsletter. The estimated decrease in funding is about $448,000. It's a reduction of about 35% of our current funding that we get today. We use those maintenance funds in the general fund and in the capital projects fund for our drainage and to maintain the public streets. Some of the costs allocated to the VDOT maintenance fund include equipment, supplies, and our public works employee salaries. The pay adjustment that will go into effect July 1st, as well as the Economic Development Coordinator, increases our general fund cost for fiscal year 13 by approximately $222,000. And if we, if we include the school division, $155,000 for the pay adjustment, that's $377,000 that we'll have to find additional revenue in future years. And also discussed in July, Dr. Parrish talked about the school division and their increase in cost and their decrease in funding that they, they're facing for fiscal year 13.
Can I talk about that just for a second? I talked with Dr. Parrish this morning, and the VRS rates that were certified by the VRS Board, which then goes into the governor's budget calculation and is ultimately considered by the General Assembly. As certified, that one cost alone, if that's what makes its way through the process, will impact our school division by more than $1 million. That's, that's an expense that we and they will have to wrestle with that will buy us nothing other than what we have, and compete, and compete for all of the, compete with all the things we do have already. And our number will be considerably less. And the reason for that, and some of you already know this, but the state rates each aspect of its VRS pool separately. State employees, teachers, and the like, and local employees. And the state has been lowering its rates because of its budget shortfall for the last few years. They've lowered the state rate, they've lowered the teacher rate, because they're a major payer into that due to standards of equality. But they've left the local government rate largely unchanged. So our impact should be the smallest by far of the three. But our schools are looking at a significant number.
Some more good news. Sorry. I just want to talk about a couple of the other funds that we, that we do need to address this year in the, in the operating budgets, when we talk about the budget. The solid waste fund has been operating at a deficit. We have used fund balance and general fund support for a number of years in this fund. And in the current year, we are funding a debris truck, which does come out of that fund balance for that particular fund, which leaves a fund balance of about $157,000 in the solid waste fund. We expect at the end of fiscal year 12. The utilities fund is also operating at a deficit. The fund, we've also used fund balance support for operations in here, in the utilities fund. There's been a decrease in new connections over the last few years, and a decrease in total accounts over the last few years. The fiscal, in fiscal year 13, the utilities fund is also going to see an increase in debt service of $260,000. Routine maintenance and equipment have not, not been budgeted to its fullest extent of what it, what it really needs to have in that, in that fund. In the future, the city will have to make repairs to the sewer system in accordance with the consent order. Options will be needed, need to be reviewed to determine the source of the revenues to pay for those repairs. To fund that, the, the fund is going to need some type of additional source. There hasn't been an increase in the sewer, in the sewer maintenance fee since 2007 for this particular fund. Questions? I was quick.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a call. Can you go back one slide? When you say that there's a decrease in total accounts in the utilities fund, what magnitude is that? Is that just onesie twosies, or, I mean, because how could we have gone down in total accounts?
We went down total accounts. There's, there's about $30,000 a year that we have lost because of the mobile home park. Of course, that's coming back online, but when the mobile home park went, went away a couple of years ago. That's mostly, that's the primary reason for it. And we haven't increased, we haven't had the development and increase as quick as we, as those connections.
If I could maybe summarize where we are, most everything that you heard this evening is consistent with what we presented to you in June. There are a few surprises. Revenue is always a, an estimate based on the best information you have. And we've been fortunate that as one side of real estate has been down, the other has been up by a similar value. The only thing that's really new here is the impact of the potential reduction for the highway reduction, or highway maintenance funds. It's just one more thing. And as we talked 15 minutes ago about maybe filling in ditches and doing other work, that's the money that we would use if we weren't going after some external funding source to do the drainage work, to do the widening work, the shoulder work, and, and other drainage work. And I'm, I'm not sure what they're going to do. But I did talk with our CTB rep last week. He was sitting next to me at the TPO, and, and I leaned over to him, and I said, are you all really serious about this? And he said, you know, we've, we're looking hard at a redistribution, because it doesn't, we've got more to do than we can possibly do. And we've got to focus on our highest priority items as, as a state. And so that left me thinking, one, they are serious, not necessarily about this plan, but they are serious. And they're, they've got a relatively fixed revenue stream that's, and the operational side of it is expanding at a rate faster than the revenue. And they're trying real hard to bring it in balance. And that may be good for the state. It probably is good for the state. It's probably not equally good for the localities, including us.
Any other questions or comments? I would tell you, Randy, I think the exercise has been good, including your summation of it. I agree that there's only one new thing there. But every one of those, except for the mobile home park, the state highway funding, this tells, lets us know as council what we need to be pushing with on our state legislators. And I know we've got a couple trips here that are, that are coming up as far as making those visits and making those rounds with them. But as well, we probably need to be looking outside of our direct ones and working with the other mayors and chairs, potentially, and, and coming out with a unified peninsula position. Because I'm sure if we're seeing this, that Hampton's seeing it, York County's seeing it, and Newport News is seeing it. So.
This particular change would affect cities and towns and two, two counties. But I think Mary Bunting said today their number is north of $3 million. So it's got their attention.
So it impacts us all. We know about the two, we know about the school challenges. I think this is just basically a reiteration of what Dr. Parrish had, had shared with us earlier in the year, especially concerning the VRS. So as we make those visits, and as you talk to each of your, you know, each of our representatives, please bring these up, and, so that we can make a positive influence on our state legislators, and they can represent us well. That's the purpose of why we're talking about it through the year, I guess. Does that sum it up pretty well?
Yes, sir. That, and you asked for quarterly updates.
That would be the reason why. Okay. Okay. Any other questions, comments, any other items that we'd like to talk about in work session? Okay, then we'll, go ahead.
Did we, we had talked some time ago about redoing the various boards and commissions and looking at different procedures, time limits, all those kinds of things. Did we ever get that any further?
The boards and commission?
Yeah. Do we still want to do that, or what's the?
Well, we took the.
You gave me the comment.
We, we took the comments.
And I gave them all back to you. I know we're sitting here waiting for you. You can tell us we want to do something.
It's back on us. Thanks for that. Thanks for that, Carrie. We're the old.
Don't ask her to do something. She'll do it. She'll give it right back to you.
All right. No, and I appreciate it greatly. So, okay. We'll take a quick 10-minute recess before the main meeting. Thanks.